You got in trouble. Did he? Got sent out for a haircut or something?
Good evening. I call the Urban Renewal Commission meeting of Tuesday, April 10th to order. Please call the roll. Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Holliday?
Here.
Commissioner Aid?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Van Haverbeek and Commissioner Mitchell are both absent this evening. And Chair Mengeleberg?
Here.
I have a question. Does that... Does not having either one of our...
Nope.
Okay.
Not having them there create a core issue?
Yes. That was the question I was gonna ask. But apparently Katie had already anticipated my question, so...
All right, on the agenda today, we have a presentation regarding environmental restoration and mitigation banking for RestoreCap as city manager. Do you want to come?
Thank you. Evening, Commissioner. So tonight is a follow-up. Couple meetings ago, we had a presentation from Hill Architecture and Hudson Holding, as well as Deacon Construction, talking about the opportunities for redevelopment on Cove Phase Two, on the Urban Renewal Agency property around Clackamas Cove. As part of that conversation, we were authorized to move forward with continuing negotiation with Hudson Holding and Deacon, but there was also a discussion about what are the opportunities for water quality improvements, habitat restoration, consistent with the work that we... That were in the report created for the commission in cooperation with Adaro earlier on by Mr. Runyon, addressing Cove habitat and water quality issues. So Hudson Holding, who's here tonight, I may remember David Moody and Colin Kehoe, reached out and introduced us to RestoreCap. They're out of California. And tonight, we have Robert Marini from... I'm sorry. From RestoreCap to kinda help us get an understanding of what mitigation banking is, how the credits work, what that process is that they go through, in a very general sense, to provide some information for the commission to see if this is an opportunity that we'd like to look into for habitat restoration around Clackamas Cove. So I'd like to go ahead and invite Robert up right now.
You gotta wait just one second. Nope, you forwarded it. I'll go back to cook.
It'll come up.
Maybe. There you go.
Hi, my name's Rob Marinai, and I'm general manager of a company called RestoreCap. And what we do is essentially mitigation banking.
And RestoreCap is from where?
We have offices in Seattle, in Oakland, in Huntington Beach, and we have a big... We have a sizable project in Portland, and up in Scoups that we're working on as well. We do mitigation banking, which in the broadest sense of the term is to improve habitat and collect credits from the improvements, and then be able to sell those credits into the market to who has demand for, you know, who has a need for the credits. And what this presentation is just going to give a brief, very general overview of what mitigation banking is. So, in general, mitigation banking is a requirement if there are impacts through... from state or federal waters, streams, or endangered species, or threatened habitat. The main regulatory drivers for mitigation banking are Clean Water Act, Endangered Species Act, CIRCLA, which is Superfund, the Rivers and Harbor Act, and Oil Pollution Act. The federal and some state regulations allow for credits to be created and then sold as offsets to impacts that either developments or past damages to habitat have done... Have been made. And essentially, what credits do is they act as a currency for compensation for impacts to sensitive species or to the waters of the U.S. As a mitigation banker, or as a credit banker, what we... It's very similar to a real estate transactions. We try to acquire or get control of property and then create an efficient design. In this case, the design is habitat improvement or wetlands improvement, and collect as... Essentially, collect as many credits as we can through those improvements as cost-effectively as we can. Just... These are just some examples of waters that would be eligible for habitat restoration. Their navigable waters or streams are considered waters of the United States, so if a development comes in and impacts a stream, there has to be an offset somewhere. You just can't really come in and have an impact to a stream and not have an offset to it somewhere.
Does that offset have to be specifically local, or regional, or national, or...
It has to be proximal to... There has to be a nexus to whatever the damage is. So you can't have... I can't develop a bank on the Sacramento River in California and have it apply to the Willamette River.
Okay, thanks. So any tributary would count? A tributary that's connected to the site in question?
Yeah, that could... That would count. It depends on the geographic distribution and the hydrologic unit of... That's already designated. So it has to be within a specific area.
And the direction of flow, is that important?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
It just has to be within... It has to have a benefit for the same species, or whatever you're trying to do.
So for instance, where the Cove is on the Clackamas River, so you could go upriver five or six miles, say, to the Clackamas Industrial Zone that borders the Clackamas River, and some of those credits could be used there?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know in that specific example, but in general...
Everybody else in the room knows what I'm talking about, so...
Common endangered threatened species that I think are important on the Willamette are Chinook and Steelhead. We're doing a big project in Linton for... In support of the Portland Harbor Superfund Site. And we're creating habitat specifically for these species. So what is conservation banking? It... And why is it a good mechanism? What it does is it provides a market framework to restore habitat. And generally, what happens with that is, one, you know, people come in with at-risk money, so they ensure that the project comes in and is built. They tend to get... It tends to get built prospectively rather than reactively in anticipation of market needs and demands. So habitat gets built sooner rather than later. It reduces development delays. If there's a development that is dependent upon, you know, an alteration of a wetland somewhere, then the credits are at the ready, so the development can move forward. Typically, they're on a per-acre basis, but sometimes they're on multiples of a per-acre basis, depending on the type of credit that is being built. And what we would do is come in and assess what is the most efficient credit to be built, or, you know, where the biggest demand is, and how things can get built the quickest. And that last bullet on the first set there kinda addresses your question about where they can be used.
How is the credit value established? And it says it's market-driven. Is it subject to rise and fall? Is it subject to appreciation or depreciation over time, depending on market forces?
Yes.
So a credit that's highly valued today can be less valued in the future, or lower value today can be higher valued 10 years from now?
Yep. Exactly. I mean, if there's... If someone comes in and develops a bank, and they're the only bank in the area, then it's a supply and demand. If other developers come in, or bankers come in, credit bankers come in, then there'll be more competition. The price could go down. If development dries up, if it's development-driven, and there's a recession, then, you know, so...
Value goes down.
Value goes down, right. So it's... So it's very much market-driven that way.
So one quick other question, maybe you'll touch on this, maybe I'm rushing the presentation. You say your company acquires or gets control. What does that entail? You get control of the property?
Of the property. So we'll look at properties, or try to find properties that we think have a good redevelopment, you know, a good credit value or conservation value by restoring the land. So if the land is impacted, but it's right along the river, and we think, well, if we make all these improvements, we'll create an ecological value of, you know, 100, where right now it has the ecological value of 10 or 20.
So when you say control, in reality, it would be contractual obligation with Hudson to do the work that you do in order to create the credits?
It depends on who owns the land that we're... That we're... That's in... That we're talking to. My understanding is on the Cove, it's owned by...
Urban Renewal Commission.
Urban Renewal Commission.
Right.
So engaging you does not change the title holder to that land? It just gives you, by your restorative actions, it gives you these marketable credits, but not title to the land or have disposition of the land?
Right. We're flexible that way. We can either take title to the property, we can lease the property long-term. At the end of the day, the property has to be turned over to a conservation easement, and it's... And so, who has title to the property while the property is being improved and developed is negotiable, it's almost transitory, because at the end, it's going to go to a permanent conservation easement that may or... That oftentimes is controlled by a nonprofit.
Does the Department of Fish and Wildlife evaluate the wetland that you're creating and determine the amount of points or credits it might be worth?
Yes. They're one of the parties. There are multiple parties who work cooperatively to assess what the value is, and they're one of them.
Does... As the credits are being created, does the other property that's going to be developed need to be identified, or can the credits just go into the bank and sit there and wait for a developer to come in and do something down the river?
They can be banked, you know... So it can work either way. It can be kind of a build-to-suit for a specific developer, or it can go in and do it just like any development. You think that there's going to be a need for them, and you do it, and you build it that way.
And those credits can just sit there until...
Yeah, they don't expire.
Okay. But they can only be sold once?
They can only be sold once. That's right. And there are credit registries that are recorded and monitored, and depending on who the lead regulatory agency is, that ensures that they're only sold once.
Thank you.
I have just notes on the benefits to the stakeholders, with the stakeholders being the regulators. What that... Instead of there being just little piecemeal kinds of restoration, the Department Fish and Game, or whoever the lead environmental regulator is, can look at the basin kind of holistically. They know where the projects are, and they can look at what's the most efficient way to do it. The applicant is a developer who needs the credits. The landowner and the developer, it provides a mechanism to generate income by creating ecological assets. And the community generally really likes these types of projects because it creates green spaces, and it's just very positive from that perspective. Some... In some cases, there are some, you know, the community may or may not have access to lease parts of where the restoration is.
So when these credits are created, who shares in their value and how their disposition? Upon the sale of the credit, say, are developers, do they generate a cash income, or how does that work? Say a credit is a thousand... I have no idea what a credit's worth. Call it $1,000, and you sell, or a percentage. What's the value to the developer?
The developer...
Or is that a negotiated?
Because the developer will need... There's a known net zero of loss for ecological or wetland habitat. So the developer can use that credit as a currency, as an exchange for whatever impacts they have somewhere else.
Understood. It's not a cash value, it's an offsetting value. If he offsets negative five, and he has a five-credit sale, he's right here.
It's basically like a credit and a debit on their balance sheet.
Sure, gotcha. Okay, thanks.
This slide just shows kind of three... The three things that have to work and coordinate to create these types of credit banks, and that's permitting, and financial investment, and then the scientific and the technical and the engineering part of it. So the financial... In order to finance these things, there's a lot of things that need to be paid for. Pre-construction studies, performance guarantee... These... The projects have to be guaranteed through performance bonds. There's land acquisition costs, program management, legal. There has to be also funds set up for the maintenance for 10 years typically, and then for a long-term endowment after that. It's... Even though they're... They're typically...
Perpetuity.
Even though they're typically very straightforward construction jobs, the permitting on these is... Can be very challenging.
And who bears those three legs that we went past?
Planning.
Who's engaged in obtaining those? Whose responsibility is it to provide?
Is that what you guys do?
Yeah.
You do all of that?
We do that.
They're the guys in the middle.
So your money is in the game also?
Yes.
Okay. Well, now you can see why it's so difficult.
Would all of these be required every time, or just specific ones?
Not on... Not on every one, but like on a wetland bank, the... Kind of the core agency is the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. They're the hub. And then, and then different, depending on the types of projects they'll bring in, those other agencies as needed. And that's on the federal side, and also if there's state lands, on the state side too. And then there's the local planning departments and construction permits, and... Where on the Willamette, we're also dealing with tribal councils as well. So on the project I mentioned on Linton, we're dealing with all of those, yeah. And then the scientific and technical, you know, pre-designed studies, biological assessments, baseline assessments, modeling, you know, so it's a very much a multidisciplinary endeavor that needs to happen. And then when you're done with all of that, you can build it, and building takes about a third of the time that all that is done.
So when you choose to get engaged on these, do you do a preliminary assessment of its potential value and credits to be earned?
Yeah, we'll do... There has to be sufficient, what's called uplift, to make sure that we're getting credits. If you just buy a fully functioning habitat, you won't get anything out of it. That and a market study, make sure that there's a market there for the credits.
So what point does that occur?
That would occur, you know, like now.
Okay.
At the very beginning of the process.
Okay.
And... But this is the last slide, actually, and this is just a little bit about us. We're West Coast-based. We've been working in the Northwest now for about 10 years. And we have sufficient investment behind us to kind of weather a lot of these costs in the bonding for these projects. And that's...
Thank you, that was good.
So your project in Scoups, have you had contact with Mayor Scott Burge and his folks?
No. No, not so far. That one is mainly in support of the Portland Superfund Site, so those are the folks we're dealing with. And I'm not sure that even in the incorporated area of Scoups, to be fair to the truth. It's north of Cal-Portland Site.
Would you mind maybe just explaining, or talking about it a little bit, when we were talking earlier? You've got... You talked a little bit, you got a project up in Seattle, had a project, and you got the project in Linton. And there's a different lease versus ownership structure in those two projects. Could you talk a little bit about that, between the two differences there?
Sure. So the project that we're working, that we had done up in Seattle, we leased a surplus land from the city of Seattle, and that was basically land, you know, underneath bridges and things like that. And the city maintained title to the project. We had a 10-year lease on it, and we're doing all of these efforts during that period. Then it gets turned back over to the city for, in this case, for the city wanted to do the long-term care and long-term maintenance of the project. On Linton, we own it fee simple title, just own it outright, and... So there's a variety of ways to do it. Like I said, at the end of the day, there'll be a permanent conservation easement placed on the property, and then we would... Our intention, for example, on Linton, is to turn it over to a conservation... A nature conservancy type of a firm for the long-term care and monitoring of it. And then we'll be out of it completely.
So understanding that, no matter what the ownership structure or lease structures, that's how the property is ultimately dispositioned into a conservancy?
Right.
Have you... Who makes that decision as to how it's been dispositioned? And have you ever... Has your company ever been in a legal adversarial position with other partners in these things as to how they disposition?
We've never had that adversarial. And to us, we're really agnostic on that.
Okay.
The regulatory agencies, and to get to that mitigation banking instrument that I think, I think we talked about, that'll be...
That plan already has to be in place prior to that?
Right.
Okay.
Right, that's prescribed. You don't get credits without that mitigation banking instrument. And that'll be... And it'll be spelled out in there.
So theoretically, either if the Urban Renewal Commission wanted to take on the long-term care and perpetuity of the site, we certainly would have the option to do that, or turn it over to, you know... I mean, there's certainly an alphabet soup of environmental organizations in Oregon that would take on that task.
Or you, right?
Well, we...
No.
We don't do that.
We don't do the long-term. Not at this point, anyway.
Could you also talk about some of the demand in the greater Portland, Oregon area of what we see and why?
Yeah, I think the market here, there... I think there's two basic markets here. One is for infrastructure and traditional development support, and the other one is for, in support of the Portland Harbor Superfund Site. And those are two different kinds of credits that would be developed, depending on which way to go. The... We know that there's demand now for more of the traditional kind of wetlands credits from Portland, and from, you know, Portland, the Port of Portland, for example, and other entities. One of the initial things that we would try to do is to assess whether or not credits that were developed down here are applicable to developments in the Cove. And that's part of the market study, market analysis that we would do. It probably is, but until you produce a document and present it to the Corps of Engineers, and you give them the proposal, and you say, "We're gonna develop a project here, we think that the market, the service area of this restoration is, you know, whatever we draw on the map," and then they'll have to agree to it, then we would have that certainty.
So there's no expiration date on the credits? There's no requirement that the credits be applied downstream versus upstream? It's not like you have to impact an area that... Anyone, there is a geographic limitation on the application?
There's a geographic limitation, but doesn't have any... Doesn't really have anything to do with stream direction.
Okay.
So you can be at the southern boundary and have it apply upstream or by south?
So it's more of a watershed than it is?
It's a watershed analysis, yeah.
So as you look at this opportunity in the Cove, and you're making the connection with the Superfund Site, are you looking to create like salmon habitat, or are you looking for...
Salmon habitat. And other things, but that's the, you know, the sensitive species, for sure, around here.
And that would be worth the most credits, theoretically? Because there's a gradient of what the restoration value is. Is that correct?
Yeah, the type of credit... Not all credits are created equal. And, for example, you know, we can... If we created credits in support of Portland Superfund Site, we might be able to get, you know, 20 or so credits an acre. If we're just doing a wetland mitigation bank credit, it's typically one credit per acre. But they're not priced the same either, so we just have to look at what makes them sell. But you can't create a wetland credit and then sell it as a superfund credit. That's like double-dipping. No, no one will... You can't do that. That's only one credit twice, so...
So did I understand correctly that in order for our co-developers to develop our area there, they have to purchase credits from another development somewhere along the Willamette or in the area? So that it's just this continuing buy-sell, buy-sell to... Oops! To keep things going along the river?
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm not... I don't know how many... What impacts will happen with the development on the Cove, and if whatever credits would be created could be used to offset that? be used for, to offset that development. But the, I think the key concept in general is that there's a no net loss. You can't, whatever, whatever the, the habitat function is within the area today, it can never be less than that as a result of development.
I understand about this, selling the credits, but are we buying credits to do our project?
That I don't, I don't.
No, I'm sure it's no.
You'd have to have assessments that says we're having a negative impact, which we, I don't know that we had that. We're, until we had a negative impact, then we'd have to, at that time, we'd have to buy credits, right?
Right.
Okay. We don't have that, we don't have no, we have no reason to believe that's the situation.
Right.
So another function of the, the wetland habitat, in addition to being a great place for salmon, is to help the water quality of the Cove, which is also a benefit to the development. Is that part of the, the plan?
Yeah.
You haven't done a whole lot of work specifically looking at the site and what you think might happen there, have you?
Not, not too much, no. I, I mean, I've looked at the development plan and I've looked at the feasibility study for the restoration and, but not much beyond that.
So you haven't really looked at, and I apologize for being so much more familiar with the site than you are, but taking water out of the Clackamas and running it into the Cove so it can go out the inlet of the Cove to cool water and make it less.
Right, yeah, I, I understand that there's some, I think, some circulation problems within the Cove and I think, I think improving water quality may, may help with the, the credit development process.
Okay.
But I know that there's algal blooms and things like that.
Right.
Yeah.
Since credit prices are market-driven, is, is there currently a fertile market for the sale of credits in this area?
There is now, but with, with the economy, you know, kind of humming along and, and infrastr, and, and investment in infrastructure. And, you know, for anybody who wants to do something along the river or improve their marina or something like that, will need to have offsets.
Right, and that's something your company would have studied to decide this is a worthy investment.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
I need to ask, and I haven't, I presume that the parties have vetted your company. You've been in existence in such and such a year. You have a history of successes and not resulting in adversarial relationships. Is that, are they all fair statements to make?
I don't know how they've vetted the company, but we haven't had any adversarial relationship. We're not, we're not in the middle of a bunch of lawsuits or anything like that.
How long have you been in existence?
About 10 years.
And a history of success?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll leave the betting to others, staff and investors.
Can you talk a little bit, we talked a little bit earlier about the Linton project in terms of this doesn't, you know, the restoration projects aren't necessarily exclusive of public access or education with them?
We do have, like on Linton, there are components of that, that, that were for public access and, and we are, actually, we've been approached, there's an, there'll be a, a building on Linton that'll stay. And we've been approached by a, a variety of, of nonprofits and universities where they want to make an education center out of it. So there are those, those opportunities. That, that's not something, you know, it's something that we like to see. It's not something that is tremendously encouraged because we're, we're, we're not creating a park. It's, it's a restoration project and more people who use it, the more impact it can have to the credits. So, so, you know, try to have, you know, very designated areas out there.
Any other questions for our presenter this evening?
Not for the presenter.
No, I would thank him for a very informative presentation and ask what the other members that are going to be involved in this have to say.
I do have a question, if I might, to either Mr. Mooney or Mr. Kehoe. Who wants to answer?
Depends on the question.
I want to know, how does this help move your project forward? But if you're going to answer, you have to come to the microphone.
Well, you can thank Frank, as I discussed after our public presentation by Lloyd.
If you could, I can interrupt, if you would say your name and company.
David Mooney of Hudson. Anyway, Frank asked me if we were going to keep this pristine or develop a, a pristine condition as possible. And I said, yes, definitely we would. That's what we want as a developer. That's what we would expect if we were an occupant. And that's what we would do if we were neighbors. So.
But the question is, how does this help your project?
It's just a, it's just a requirement and it's an improvement in the living, livability of the project. So it has a market impact.
Okay.
Frank, have you got any question for me?
No, I do not. I mean, we had our discussion, it was an open discussion, you remember my position? And it was not only for the protection of the city and the future occupants, but it was the protection of the investors as a marketable device and what it should be.
Right.
And I'll leave it at that. I'd like to see sky blue waters as the artist portrayal was. I appreciate you following up on that single comment that I made at that time. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Happy to do it.
Any other questions for this gentleman?
No, no, it's probably not a question, it's more of, speaking of credits, this started probably about a year ago and I got a call from Jerry Herman to say, you better get down here, take a look at what Gladstone's doing with Portland Harbor funds and credits and things like that. And went down there, met and met John Runyon back there. And that's what kind of got this started, that we started talking about that mitigation down at the Cove, what could happen and, and the credits could be available. And so we brought that back to Eric and that's kind of how the whole mitigation on the Cove started was because of these guys, so.
If I were to rephrase the mayor's question, if credits are earned by the involvement of this company, how, how could they be used in the advancing of this development or can they be spent? Are there projects we may encounter that we somehow utilize those credits? And I'm not, I'm not sure how that works. It's not like they have a cash value. They, they have an offsetting value as if we were going to do something that was viewed as negative. And maybe others can explain that to me.
I think that's up to Robert to explain, you know?
I do too, thank you. Exactly right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you want, do you want him to come forward? Or is he, he'll answer that? I'll leave it to the chair.
Yes, of course.
Sure, I think, I'd like that question answered, certainly. And I think it just paraphrases the mayor's question quite honestly.
All right.
So the question is, do they have cash value or?
No, no, the question is, say some finite amount of credits are accumulated by virtue of the work that's done. If, if there is no negative impact done by our developers in, in creation of the Cove, what value they have? If there is a negative impact, obviously those are used to offset that for that zero sum. But how, how do they advance, how can they be spent or expended in the furtherance of this project? Other than just offsetting zero, uh, negative impacts, correct?
If I understand quite, I mean, if, if we, I mean, there, there may or may not be demand for credits from this project. And if there is not a demand for credits from the development project and we create a bank, we're going to have, you know, whatever it is, 30 credits to sell. And if there's no market there to sell it, we have to sit and wait for the market to develop or else we lose money.
And what is the value of those credits to our developers or to our partners in this development?
Monetary value?
Any value. If there's no market for them, the value is currently zero, right?
Right.
Okay, I understand. I was just trying to understand, I was elaborating upon the mayor's question so that I could make sure I wasn't missing anything.
Have there been any recent credits sold in the Portland Harbor or in response to the Superfund site?
Not, not recently, no.
Do you have a, a range that you've seen?
For, for price or? For the Portland Su- Superfund site, depending on the location of, of the credit, they're $40,000 to $100,000 a credit.
So is there no future monetary compensation for anybody involved in this project? You say you bank 100 credits at $40,000 per credit or any number per credit. They're not sold, but they're in your bank. They have come about as a result of your engagement with these investors and this group of people that are building this. You don't sell them and three years down the road, you are able to sell them. Is there any remuneration to those people that, whose property helped you generate those credits?
Sure.
Okay, that's, that's, that's a question.
There's the question I was trying to get to.
Hey, that's the question.
That, that's all depending on, on what agreements are stuck. I mean, you can't, you can't develop credits without the land.
Well, I understand that, but we kept, we were never answered the cash value of current, present or future, and now we understand there is.
Let me, and let me see if I can clear this up, okay? So we have three parties involved here.
Okay.
We have you, sort of in the middle. We have Hudson Holdings, who is the developer, and we have the organization, Urban Renewal Commission, who is the owner of this particular parcel. So down the line, let's say we get 20 credits. Who do those credits belong to?
The developer.
The developer?
To you.
Right.
Not to you, to the developer?
No.
Yeah, that's what's confusing.
No, 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 he's the developer. He's the credit developer. Okay.
But there's a contractual agreement between you and the other two parties as to who shall share in so much and a future disposition or sale of those?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, okay, that clears it up.
So there could be a one-time sale and we sell the property to restore cap for a certain amount of money upfront. We're out. There is a lease.
Right.
We have a lease generation company.
But all that's to be determined.
All of that's negotiated.
And all that gets looked at by our lawyers. So I, yeah, okay, I'm done with this.
And Hudson Development lawyers and everybody else's lawyer. Okay, I understand it better now. I, that's the answer I needed, thanks.
Okay, any other questions for this gentleman? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, once again, good job.
Thank you.
Are there any other presenters on this topic? Any other comments by staff?
Not on this issue, no.
All right, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, the managers' report.
Okay, just a quick update from Ms. Turway, just reminding folks of the relocation of the Green Development Department building.
Thank you, but we are looking forward to moving from our current location.
Really?
To 21 Mall Avenue to our new location, which is 698 Warner Parrot Road. We will be moving starting a week from today. And the move is a bit complicated because we're using our existing furniture and so it's going to take a little bit longer. The planning and building departments will be here at City Hall on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. And then we will be closed on Friday and then we'll open back up again on April 23rd, which is a Monday, at our new office. So we're in the, at the corner of Lynn and Warner Parrot. We're the small building at the annex and we look forward to serving our customers with better parking on a transit line and same friendly faces. So give us a call if there's any questions, although we're closed on that Friday, the 20th, there are still inspections every day.
So give me something to brag about. Did we bring it in at or under budget? Do we have to get into, what's the term we use for allowance?
Contingency funds?
Contingency, do we have to dip into that? Let's brag if we did it right, did we?
Well, we're at the end, so we're still incurring costs during this last week, but yes, we should be on time and on budget.
Without entering into the contingency fund.
Well, contingencies are baked into our budget and so you anticipate some change orders and contingencies, but we're not going in to get financing that we didn't have before. So it's all part of the existing project budget. We started with a small project budget.
I'm looking for the final financial summary of the project, so.
Yeah, no, our contingency was half of what a normal project would be. So we kind of started on a thin line and we do have some leftover.
Commissioner's chair and commissioners ordered an excellent job on this project. She won't be coming back asking for any additional funds and she did come in on time and under budget, so.
Thank you, wife.
Wonderful, thank you.
Financial statement at the end.
I'm a little more comfortable, Laura, because today, as I was driving up Malala, here was a pickup pulling out of the parking lot with two, two file cabinets on the back of it. It's like, I knew we were in good shape that Laura's moving and storage was helping the move up there. I didn't know if you were driving the truck or not, but you know.
We have streamlining, if we don't need it, we're getting rid of it.
God.
Just a quick update from John Lewis.
So just wanted to give you a heads up that ODOT is having a public conversation and some of you may already know about this, we sent it out today, but I just wanted to mention it as well. The public conversation is about congestion pricing. Now congestion pricing is also termed value pricing, or if you really wanted to get to the bottom of it, it's about tolling options. So the way it's, the way they presented is congestion pricing to help improve travel times and reliability on I-5 and I-205.
Of course they do.
So there's an, also an online, so the, the open house is more of a, the, the public open house where you can go to and actually see boards and talk to staff is Thursday, April 12th from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Museum of the Oregon Territory, which is at 211 Tumwater Drive. There's also an online open house, if you prefer to do that, that's open through the 19th. So it's open right now. So take a look at that. I think it's important that we have feedback. Obviously that's a, there's, they're doing four open houses and they're all across the region, so it's not just Oregon City's input that's, that's going to influence this decision, so.
John, can you remind the viewing public which highways they're looking to congestion price?
So they're talking about improving traffic, reliable travel times on I-5 and 205, but as far, what I've heard is their, their first look has been on I-205, but they may be looking further than that. I saw several scenarios in their early.
One of the scenarios includes C-17 as well as 205.
Yeah, so I, I haven't heard the latest that they've landed on just 205 or 205 and I-5 or 205 and 217, so.
And, and is, are they looking at like one lane or all of the lanes or?
Again, there were several scenarios that I saw, so I haven't, they haven't narrowed that as far as I know.
So I heard a disembodied voice say the word toll. Does that word show up anywhere in this document that you've reviewed? Toll as in toll road?
Yeah, toll is actually in the announcement, they actually use that term as well.
We just got the announcement today, I believe.
Yeah.
They tried to disguise it with all the flowery state speech, but it's.
It's about two paragraphs down, but.
They buried the lead.
Appropriately, it's, you know.
I'd be interested in the contribution of roads such as our own to the 205 problem, so.
Well, the bigger question is whether tolling 205 creates problems for us. Yeah, so pushing traffic off of 205 onto McLaughlin Boulevard or on the Highway 43.
So I've, I've, you know, I've heard Wes Lynn, for instance, has concerns about Willamette Drive.
As they should.
Folks that might want to get off 205 and use Willamette Drive. I don't know how much validity there is to that, but it's those kind of things.
It's valid, go over there at 4:30 and try to get back onto the bridge over to Oregon City using Willamette Drive.
Usually backed up to the bus bar.
Yeah, you need, you find out all you need to know.
You go up on the sidewalk.
And you don't even have to be a traffic engineer.
Anything further on that?
That concludes our updates for tonight.
Okay, if there's nothing else, thank you very much, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks.